Alright, pressed all the buttons, here we are. It's Tuesday, 24th of June 2025. And today we have the... I don't know, we got a bunch of updates from the workgroups. And we're being joined by Alfred, Ashley, Bynabas, Colleen, Guillermo, Kevin and Max. A relatively small group today and... Yeah, with that in mind, we kind of decided to let the slides be as they are and just go with the people present that we have and then get all the updates we can. And I do have a couple of short mentions, first one being on the workgroup sinking call. I figured it would be decent to do that coming Monday on 16 UTC, but it's also quite open to other suggestions if people feel... Yeah, it should be on a different... I see myself putting 31st there. Wait, let me just... I'll put it on the calendar right after this call. And I'll also mention it on the Ambassador General channel so that if people feel it's a really bad idea to have that slot, then we can still change it, of course. And also wanted to give a quick reminder on the Q3 budget process because right now it's Tuesday and since past Sunday end of day, the workgroups that received objections did have an opportunity to adjust their proposals or reporting depending on the objections received. And these are all in, and now the core contributors have until Wednesday end of date, so tomorrow. Probably a little bit too late if you see the recording, but for those in the room. Yeah, tomorrow, end of day UTC, that's the deadline for submitting the second round of consent forms. And then Thursday during open governance, we'll... yeah, see what the current state of affairs is, where we're at. If we can tick off all the boxes and there's no more objections and we're all a happy family, or if there's maybe still some work to be done. Yeah, that remains to be seen and depends on the feedback we're getting. So please do give that feedback because without it, we're nowhere. And I believe that covers... Yeah, as mentioned, today's channel was the monthly workgroup updates one. And well, let's see, where do we get started? Usually we have the slides and there's this forced list of workgroups, but based on the current attendance of the call, we figured we would go without that. And yeah, any volunteers in the room that want to start things off?
Yeah, let's do this. Let's make a deal. I will do fast LATAM. Then we go with R&amp;D and we can follow up with governance and you help me with that. As Van is not here because they, R&amp;D and governance are really hand by hand now. So, okay. I need permit to share screen. I'm gonna try to keep it simple, but I wanna share some LATAM really cool stuff that is happening. With the community, with the LATAM community. We are evolving into the ASI LATAM community. We have that in place already. We are working in the, let's say, dual and parallel communication, pushing SingularityNet efforts, all our ecosystem. And also build a new channel for ASI LATAM. Where we gather all members, Fetch, Ocean. So that's been happening for, I think, two months and things have been really cool. We have some organic interactions with community members that really is really interesting to share with you guys shortly. So I'm gonna try to this time share the right screen. Okay, so here it is. We started small, so a month ago. We joined December, we kept it without activity to a couple of months now. So we haven't verified it yet, but look what is happening. All communication we push from this account gets really good engagement. And this called the attention of a community member from Venezuela. And he started organically creating content about our platforms, okay? He did it in English. He started in English, okay? So he reached out in our socials. I said, "Okay, join the family. We can use this, let's say, initiative-driven kind of character around." He's a developer. So mainly it's good to see that the results of the outreach and the onboarding strategy is working. We have enough of, let's say, marketing. So if we want to create content, we want to make it developer-driven. And we are following also what ASI is doing. So just get joined. He created a thread. We push it out and it had so much interaction. Then again, he pushed out about the agent verse from the ASI1 integration, okay? It's not SingularityNet specific, but of course a lot of our developments are gonna end up in this agent verse and working integrated with ASI1. Again, another thread, really cool amount of views from a non-verify account. So we are working this strategy, we are pushing through two accounts. And we are following, again, global marketing strategy. We are trying to pack it up and redo what is working. So a couple of meetings. And this is the next thing we're gonna be doing, that is creating a video like global is doing. Explaining or going through... How to set up an agent, how to activate and deploy agents in ASI1 and all Fetch framework. So with this in mind... With this in mind, okay? That it's... Agent Showcase, okay? This is pretty cool. We analyzed all the content they have been creating. Engagement with when it is an AI reading the script and when it is a human showing, you know, they're in train. And it really changed the amount of engagement, so really analytics play a role there. So we are deciding... So Leanne just shared this with me some minutes ago, not too much. We approved the script. We tried one, agent was taken from the agent verse. We were ready, script ready. Okay, it's not activated today, so last night when Leanne was about to record. So we had time to have some more brainstorming, pick another agent. And we're gonna be doing this, we're gonna be having the human aspect. So that's Central American Spanish, it's really colorful. So Leanne is gonna be on the bottom, on the right, so we're gonna keep the human aspect, we're gonna keep it human as possible. And also have the human flavor in it because empathy, engagement and all that is really cool. And the other thing we wanna share with you guys, I'm sorry I'm going too long, is this. Yesterday it was announced, so Buenos Aires, Argentina is gonna have a big... Now, this is showing? Ah, no, this is not showing.
Or tweet on Agent Spotlight.
Yeah, too many accounts. There you go. November 17 is gonna be in parallel with a DEFCON, big Ethereum family event that is happening. They have a big, so spring in Buenos Aires is gonna be crazy. And now we have the ASI team, Ocean and probably more members of the community joining. So we will get something special cooked for that time of the year, probably warmer than today. So yeah, so that's gonna be really cool, probably what, interaction with institutions, universities, AI ethics, full send. Yeah, Nexus, I don't know, so much to do. Our friends from the NerfConf, Nervearla is happening on that same weekend. So I don't know, we need to work on this. Okay, that will be, I think, for LATAM. There's again, a big, full report that is available in all our governance platforms with deliverables. A new budget already approved for these new initiatives. And the video with the agent showcase is gonna be, I think, in two days we're gonna be sharing. So later on we will reach out our communication team to push it out. All full send in all our platforms, okay? All our medias.
Awesome.
Okay, and that's LATAM. Any questions in the room or something to add?
Quite clear to me. Should we...
You can ask again, you can ask again if somebody wants to step up for their workgroup.
We do have a couple of extra joiners right now, so yeah, also to the new joiners. As you can see, we're not doing any of the slides today. We figured we would simply, yeah, figure it out as we go. So if you want to give an update on one of the workgroups you're involved in, you most definitely can. So please, yeah, either raise your hand or put something in chat and that's all clear. I could squish in a little bit on moderators workgroup, just for a bit of variety, but basically there's not much to update. It's a super study, it's just, it's working. There's no meetings, there's no changes, there's no... yeah, it's just working. So that's the most boring update ever, but... Figured I could throw it in for a little fun.
And what about governance? Why don't you give a short governance kind of introduction and then we show the tool, try to put some context?
Well, most of the context there would be that, as most of you know, we work with this consent process, which is over time has proven to be relatively hard to find proper tooling for. And we do forai, like change a couple of parameters every quarter. For example, this quarter we introduced a quorum. We put it at 17% of core contributors need to have reacted to a proposal. And I kind of feel we put it a little low because all proposals passed, just by, some even by only one. So we didn't yet get to experiment with, well, what happens if we find ourselves in a situation where a workgroup doesn't get enough engagement? Yeah, so there's that. Let's see, yeah, one of the recurring themes that we're puzzling with is tracking objections over the multiple quarters. Because there are some workgroups that receive objections, clearly, a lot of workgroups do. And trying to puzzle them out in itself does work, not all of the objections perfectly get solved. And there are some that are recurring. So yeah, that's one of the ways, and I'm trying to build a bit of a bridge here towards the governance tool, as you can hear. That's one of the things that needs improvement. We do have a whole bunch of documents trying to manually keep track of it, which works, it's just... Yeah, it's not ideal and... Well, I guess that brings us to the governance dashboard. And yeah, to that Guillermo would be the best to share since you're the one organizing everything and building it.
Okay, so let's do this, that's more than 10 of us here. Okay, yeah, so we are building on top of what the community have been building, there is its own governance. As Peter mentioned, each workgroup has freedom, the ability to create a roadmap. And through a consent process, we quarterly we review objectives, we have a very constructive system. There wasn't a tool and we are adapting and changing quarterly. And these guys have been building this consent process that I didn't know much about. And using this as a roadmap and to draft a blueprint. And then with a CollabHub initiative that also it's the result of community. We came up with this idea of building our own framework for architecture and I'm gonna share the link right there. So you link, you hit the link, people, everyone in the room, okay? And we're gonna do this exercise live. The thing is already deployed. So we're gonna debug, review and test while we are building, okay? So don't start pointing out the things that are not there because there are a lot of stuff that is not there already, but there's some stuff. And when you log in, you're gonna read it, first thing you're gonna have your login Discord. I'm gonna share my screen because I wanna just a couple of things kind of showcase while we're doing this. But at the moment that you log in, you get a profile and that is assigned through your Discord, okay? So picture of your Discord is gonna be the one you saw your profile. And you're ready to edit, okay? If you go to the left. You guys have seen my screen already, well, if you guys are not playing with the thing already.
Of course we are.
You're playing with it, so if I go to collaborators, oh, I can see Peter already is in, I can see Max already is in, okay? The thing is already there. It's breathing and leaving while we talk. If you go to the left menu, the navigation, that is missing some big, big sections already. But if you go to edit profile, you're gonna be able to edit your profile. Pick the workgroups you... Today Peter added another thing that it's, whether it's Discord labels or something, we need to add to this.
What are the roles?
Discord roles, okay, so we can build, add whatever we think is useful. So I'm gonna do this live right now. You guys saw that when you log in, the system is already pulling your info to the database, alright? So... This is me, wanted to address privacy issues, we are gonna discuss that, but again, this is... So busy, available, very busy, this is having in consideration that we are not building only a governance dashboard anymore. We are building a community collaboration framework kind of at this point. Because we need the user profile to be able to build all the other aspects of governance. So at the end, we needed, we needed something that we didn't thought at the beginning. So again, that's building, so gonna keep it short. So I'm available for today, I'm gonna pick Armenian, I have a long, long relative back there. And I'm gonna pick governance LATAM and R&amp;D. I'm gonna put this in there, old enough, the thing already have some memory. It will help you write when you're typing, you know, have the correction embedded on it. Experienced, old enough. You can upload your resume or your CV, socials, okay? They've taken the memory on this, save changes. Changes have already been saved, so if I go now to collaboration or you Peter go. Very busy, it's Peter. So if I see the profile and now I can see it's already updated, workgroups, okay? Socials. And if I click, I'm gonna pop up, I'm gonna have biography and again, all the information that I do wanna share, the one that I not. Then we have operative and administrative information that is not gonna be shared, but we're gonna use it to have an integration with wallet connect and all that, okay? Again, there you go, Peter 1234, my friend, okay? Okay, proposals. This is all, okay, tests, proposals. How are we gonna do this? Because at the end, we're gonna re-adapt what we have, okay? Are we gonna keep using this character limitation? Are we gonna include the proposal or the report into the proposal? Or are we gonna just put a title and include the two links we always do, share, a Google Doc or... So that's still, we're gonna figure it out. I can, I'm imputing the R&amp;D quarter, giving a title, I'm putting some expiration date, okay? That will be the first iteration. I'm gonna save it and if you see here, the thing already works with links. So yeah, I can, I'm gonna dump all these suckers, there you go. There you go, again, so we can input the reports or we keep it simple. And then, so we have been building the architecture, now we are gonna get into details and all the stuff we wanna input on this or inserts. So this is the report, probably too long, so probably links were better. We're gonna, we're gonna turn comments into concerns. And then there's this other system that we already have in process, through our consent process. Our governance, three iterations, that we're gonna include that now that we have the data, the database already set up. Yeah, okay, so what else is there for to share? Okay, help and support. Question, so we have a Q&amp;A already in place. Media. Okay, here, Vani and Peter are gonna enjoy this, but the thing is that we can adapt this. Imagine we can use this for all spinners of the ecosystem for whatever. So each, each spinner will have their own education input for whatever. They're gonna use a decision tool like this or a community collaboration thing like this. Colors, background and all that, still to be decided, don't worry about that. The thing that the thing works and that we use it, okay? Expired, probably, yeah, not expired yet, analytics is not working because we don't have still data. The same with notifications, yeah, still not built in. And lastly, on the navigation, we're gonna have workgroups and guilds and there's other stuff. I know it's already, it's on paper that we need to, we need to put it in. So you will follow up, not only governance activities, but also we can input here deliverables as part of the report. And yeah, so the section for workgroups and guild will be really important to follow up and select, okay, governance and follow up their iteration of deliverable, monthly, and now governance. And then to see who have been engaging in that, okay? Because, and again, a lot of stuff that we need to keep adding to it, so yeah, that's where we are now. And to close, the other proposals that have been voted by the community. I'm gonna share the links here so everybody can read the last updates. Last, it was what, last Wednesday, we have our bi-weekly R&amp;D and that's a result of a meeting. And that's a result of a voting for everybody to follow up. On the second link, you're gonna have the voting and the proposal. And on the first link, what is the summary of last week's agenda and summary? We imputed what, where you have the updates on the SEO for the program and event scheduling. You have UI prototyping updates and everything is there for you guys to follow up. And that would do it.
Quit. Yeah, great overview. So that's basically wrapping up governance and R&amp;D at the same time, right?
Sorry for that.
That's pretty much governance and R&amp;D at the same time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I told you, I'm kind of sick, so I'm here in half. Yeah, it will cover also, not only governance, but the links you will have, the updates on the other two proposals that were voted by the community. And they have already start building one, TiVo, sorry, it's leading the team. And the other one, Kisi, that is an initiative with, from the video workgroup and marketing. There is a research for the SEO, so let's see how that comes together too.
Yeah, awesome. Alright, thanks for sharing and yeah, we'll definitely play around a bit on the tooling. Will you share these links also in a wider audience or is it just for Tanofer now or?
It's open source and everything is for everybody.
Yeah, just checking.
Yeah, yeah, again, it will be a greater list of suggestions, something that could be added. But still, again, it's really a draft, it's the first architecture that we are sharing. But previously we were sharing a mockup, okay? It's already in place.
Yeah, absolutely. Could even make a proposal as a placeholder for a feature request list.
Yep, yep.
Awesome, quick check, any questions in the room before moving on to...
Yeah, just one question, and you may have said it, I might have missed it, sorry, my service is going out a little bit. But I'm looking at the Google Docs, the layout looks great, I like having the... Ahead of time, being able to see the details. I would love to vote for a couple of those, so where do the actual votes go? Is it through the Google Docs link?
Yeah, yeah, Kevin, I think it's on the, on the report, I'm gonna share the report. This is the R&amp;D, the last link, let me look for it, it's too many words. But there you have the, I think, the results that are embedded on the spreadsheet, the results of the funnel. Here in the document I share, I extract the data to have it handy. Did that respond to question, Kevin?
Yes, perfectly.
Alright, yeah, then moving on, I see a couple more people joined in since we started off. Just a small note there, today we kind of got rid of the slides and we're just going as we go. So yeah, renewed request, if you have any updates to share on the workgroups you're involved in, please feel free to do so. So I think we have a couple more people joined in that are in the position to give these updates, so by all means, please, yeah, you can simply unmute and go for it. Also happy to call out people, but like... I think we've got writers in the room, we've got marketing represented. We've got strategy, I think. This would be the monthly call where the updates are provided, so yeah, that's pretty much your queue right now. Crickets, alright. Perhaps anything on African Guild? Or perhaps not. That does bring up upcoming governance topic on, it was brought up a couple of times on the consent process. But some workgroups are not providing... Um, but some workgroups are not providing um updates in this specific monthly tunnel uh call. And those objections were deemed invalid, uh, seeing it's, uh, it's not a mandatory thing, um. At the same time, that will be the topic of discussion, like, um, would it make sense to to have something like that, um, be mandatory? To, you know, get like, um, have somebody show up representing the workgroup, doesn't need to be if your workgroup has a defined workgroup lead, it doesn't necessarily have to be the workgroup lead. Um, but yeah, kind of like, once a month, everybody gets to hear what you're doing, kind of concept feels relatively strong to me. Um, so yeah, that will be appearing on the governance workgroup um agenda. And yeah, I can't quite force people to give updates, so if nobody's stepping up, then I'm not sure what to do, uh, that that kind of puts it into a wrap. Gonna be an early one and a short one today, but yeah. Again, please feel free to to share updates if you have any.
I don't have any updates, but I want a second, man. I think if people are getting bug hits, they should, um, you know, come by and tell us what they're doing.
Yeah, fair, yeah. I think the same kind of relates to the workgroup syncing call, which is also monthly, so there would be two monthly calls where this it's kind of just, yeah, synchronizing with the rest, the the wider program. I do see you raised that, Konichi.
Um, hello there, everyone. Um, actually on mute right now, so that's why I didn't uh unmute to make it clear, but can you guys hear me at least? It's real loud, I mean.
No, it's getting filtered very well.
Okay, I, I, uh, this past month actually has been, no, I wouldn't say slow because uh this Q2, um, due to the um AGI's drop and everything, we had to actually like step back a bit and try to figure out what were essential and the things that we actually had to report on. So, um, we actually used the first month of Q2 to um extensively research articles that we want to go into ensure that the content and the stuff we are putting out relates to what AI is speaking about right now, what SingularityNet is up to. So yeah, uh, we've gotten a couple of publications out already, we still have a few in the pipeline actually. Uh, drafted already, but we're just waiting on the graphic design. And uh, yeah, those articles will also be going out, so I think we've published about, at least for this month, we've published about six or five articles and we still have like about at least two more to publish. So also, um, our actual focus for Q2 has been looking for ways to activate the community orb we created on Twitter. So we think of it as an announcement orb and a place for all community members to catch up on everything SingularityNet is working on and was new in the AI world. And um, so far, we've like actually gotten people to do introductions, but we've been working on strategies and ways to actually gamify the the whole engagement process there and also ensure that um every single blog post that we posted out or every single video, the video workgroup makes or anything, anything that comes out of the ambassador program basically should be posted there and that's uh the pipeline we're trying to figure out right now. Once that is set up, they will be able to engage more. So I can send uh a link so everyone here can actually join the community orb, as long as you have a Twitter account, just uh join. And you can always uh spotlight it on your profile. Uh, that way, everyone that comes to your profile will be able to see you're a part of the SingularityNet Ambassador Program community on Twitter. So I'll share a link to that now, that's actually been one of the things we are looking to push. And um also, we actually have a few other initiatives, I don't know if anyone noticed that the software hasn't been so active. But yeah, we've been trying to like restructure a bit in-house, so I expect a lot more to come from uh Q3 and that will be next month. So thank you very much.
And thank you for stepping up, audio was perfectly fine, um. Okay, yeah, I'll see that that link appear. It does make me uh remember me about, um, on on Twitter specifically, there's um, on the Singularity Net account, uh, there's a list uh, which is trying to keep track of all the ecosystem uh projects. And basically, the way a list works, it's, it's, it's basically amplifying or collecting um everything that's, that's getting shared by all the ecosystem um projects, um, I haven't quite found a way of of like uh automating anything there, um. Yeah, there's the link, thanks. Awesome. All right, um. Welcome, Rems, joining for his very first meeting, awesome. Um, let's see, we are getting towards the end of this meeting though, so um let's see, I guess I might do another try for um seeing if there's anybody representing a workgroup that wants to share an update. But seeing the amount of responses a couple of minutes ago, I think we're there, um pretty much right now. Um, there is still 10 minutes remaining on the slot, so um also outside of the workgroup updates, um, if there's any questions, any things you want to share, um yeah, there's time and you most definitely can. Simply, uh, yeah, feel free to simply unmute and uh speak.
Hey, Peter.
Hey.
Um, I just wanted to know, I know I have a little bandwidth right now, I've got issues as usual, but um I uh wanted to know if Kevin could be able to share the spreadsheet that we're doing to highlight some of the side projects that ambassadors are doing. Um, Kevin, if you have the link, could you share it to the um spreadsheet? We are trying to um highlight some of the side projects that ambassadors are working on and just to be able to celebrate them and and let each other know what uh we're all working on individually as well.
Let me just go into the uh channel here, I think I got it right here. Cali did great work on this and uh I think we can put something fun together to uh kind of showcase what uh people are building alongside the ambassador program or what ambassadors are building themselves and uh I uh I have been talking to uh Rui from Mindplex about getting more involved and uh working alongside the ambassador program with writers and, you know, potentially, you know, i- if things go well, maybe marketing and uh video as well. But uh start bringing Mindplex in as a uh sort of a pipeline and a mouthpiece for what everyone's doing and we can create stories where, you know, the ambassadors sort of promote Mindplex, but also Mindplex gives an outlet where um you know, the ambassadors can actually become contributors to Mindplex, building stories for them and releasing through them. And I think it would be nice to showcase like what the ambassadors are actually doing. Uh, let me, I think I just posted the link, can everyone see that?
Yeah, it's there in chat.
So if any ambassadors have any side projects or uh things they're working on that uh we can all highlight together collectively, boost each other up, you know, that would be fantastic. We're here as a community, let's uh, let's support each other.
Yeah, absolutely, and thanks a lot for uh having that up.
Um, that's a great idea, I like that.
Yeah, we thought that most investors have their own agendas as well alongside of SingularityNet and usually within SingularityNet, so uh, it would be good to see how those relationships are are working and um just to see what everyone's working on and and to, like Kevin said, celebrate each other, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's no secret, I uh, you know, I I came in as an ambassador at the, uh, when this program kind of started up at the beginning and uh being in this community uh inspired me to create my own company, Just Keep Going Incorporated. And without being an ambassador, Just Keep Going does not exist, okay? So I I think if we can all come together and like push each other up, it's gonna be more companies, more projects being created out of this community to support this community and the furtherance of the entire ecosystem as a whole. And uh, my project itself is now taking me around the world many times over, so get involved, you know, uh, come to the meetings and who knows, you might be the next one flying around the world, working with athletes and building AI into sports or whatever your personal project is. This really is a foundation to create if you, if you utilize it um in all aspects. And uh, you know, you give and you get.
Yeah, absolutely, and there's tons of um further synergies to explore, it's, it's um it's still early in that sense, um, even though things are moving since since years, but cool, um, I quickly wanted to share the meeting schedule for the remainder of the week, especially wanted to call out um the session by onboarding workgroup um, on Thursday. Nothing against the uh, the other workgroup meetings, uh, but all these others uh are are more standard and this one by onboarding, uh, onboarding workgroup is is really trying to give a good overview about SingularityNet ecosystem. And it's uh, it's uh 13 UTC on Thursday. So I figured I would give that a little bonus shout out. Um, I do have to put another quick reminder on, um please check if the calendar is representing your events correctly, because it keeps happening that there's um meetings scheduled which appear to not take place. So there's that, um, yeah, please double check. Uh, Giammo, if you end up?
Yeah, I wanna thank you, Pete. Last call to action because I see a lot of newcomers in the call. Um, so governance framework is already pretty draft and first draft, but it will be good to have a yeah, members of the community uh joining, logging and uh starting to build their own experience with the tool while we're building it. And probably later on, we'll have a a retrospective, a whole feedback session uh that uh yeah, community members are gonna be helping from different workgroups. So that's there, uh, I see already Pete, Jeffrey, Max uh join. So when you log in with Discord, your profile is already created, but play with it and see where we are at today and we will follow up uh later on uh in the upcoming weeks with the development. Cool.
All right, um, one final thing, I want to um push people to check the uh website channel, it's under the research uh section on on Discord. Um, got a bit of uh solid feedback already, uh, but it's, it's still very much open to uh more feedback. Unfortunately, for the past couple of days, it's just trying to get the the calendar integration to work and yeah, if you check it out, um, again, it's a website channel on Discord, um. It's currently not correctly integrated, um. It's, it's still being worked on and it shouldn't be too long, um. Still hoping for GoLife relatively quickly. Uh, but then again, yeah, it's, it's a bit shitty to push it live if it's not working correctly, so that does kind of block it right now. And I think that is pretty much it for today, um. But again, as earlier, if you have anything to to share or a question or a remark, uh, please don't hesitate, simply unmute and go for it. All right, um, yeah, with that, I think um we can conclude for today. Thanks all for for being here and sharing your time and your updates, if applicable, and.
Thank you, Peter, for all that you do, thank you, thank you for hosting.
You're welcome and hope to see you on one of the, I should just say, many upcoming, uh, well, still remaining for this week. And do have a nice remainder, hopefully Tuesday. Cheers.